Just do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we may as well continue the people. The people should have a right for speedy redress of grievances.
Okay, we are recording. I'm trying to get it. Um, so if you guys want to go ahead and start while I do this, at least say what today is and Diane do your normal spiel.
Normal spiel, okay. So today is, uh, this is our Saturday work session, November 7, 2020. And we have presence, um, council, myself, Diane Schrempf, council president, Mayor Hughes, Councilman Bruegger, our attorney, Jess Schenk, Councilman Wolf, Councilman Bruegger. I hear, uh, and let's see David. David, okay, David's not showing, but, uh, Councilman, Matt Mara. And is Kim on?
Yes, I'm here.
I see her.
Okay, you see her? And, uh, Kim Pulley? Is that, is that it? Did I miss anybody? That's, I can't see.
No, that's it. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're starting the work session. Uh, we do have, uh, Kim Pulley here to talk about the budget and answer any questions. Um, we did have a finance committee meeting on the budget. Kim has a limited amount of time to speak with us. Uh, Kim, what is your timeline again?
I have to be off about 8:30.
About 8:30, okay. So, uh, anyway, sorry, would you like, so Kim, do you have some things you'd like to talk about, or do you just want to have me go through something? How would you like to do it?
Um, I've. Can y'all see my screen?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Um, I'll just go through real quick if that's okay with any highlights and then after that, we can, if you want to take over Diane, or there's any questions, does that work?
Sure.
Okay, um, Police Department, there's really no changes from last year. There's, um, it's actually, the Police Department budget's actually going down slightly, um, in 2021, and that's partly due to, um, we had a lease of the fourth cruiser that was paid in 2020, so, um, for 2021, there's only a budget of replacement for a vehicle. Um, plus a few other things, but the, um, the overall went down. Um, Personal Services is going down slightly because we're probably going to end up replacing some higher paid employees with fewer lower paid employees due to some anticipated upcoming possible turnover. The EMS, uh, as you can see, uh, is now just the contractual services payment to Columbus. I've went ahead and put the entire amount in here, but, uh, this is with the expectation that we are going to ask the Tax Commissioner to allow us to transfer the money out of our capital improvement fund that we were setting aside money for a new vehicle for. We're going to put it back into the general fund to pay the contract if that changes. Um, this will change slightly, but I, I think that's the route to go. Um. Um, the Provide Maintain Parks, if you happen to look at a previous budget, this was significantly higher. Um, but this is not anything actually changing. It's just changing where we're paying from. Maintenance did have, um, some salary and benefits here. But that's all being moved down into the, uh, buildings and grounds instead of trying to split it out between parks, which is kind of like parkland versus, uh, rounds of maintenance, which is more broad and really encompasses more of what they're doing. So this is a decrease, but it is a, it has a corresponding increase elsewhere. So it's really a, there's no change. Um, with this other community environment, this includes, um, some money for engineering for the lakes. It includes some money for, um, some landscaping or geese control. And there is one other thing that was new, proper 21. Oh, some community events, um, that the village may want to contribute to, like the carriage rides or block parties, those types of things. Um, so that's, that is higher than in previous years, um, but, and those are the new things that are included there. Um, Mayor's Office kind of has something similar going on as with the maintenance. There's just been a reallocation of expense. Um, Becky's salary used to be paid only 50% from here. It's going to be paid 100% from here going forward, just based on what she actually does now. Um, so there's no overall change, but it is an increase to the Mayor's Office, but it was a decrease to planning and zoning where she used to be paid from before. Um, there's also an alignment, a realignment between Mayor's Court and Finance again with contracting out payroll. Leah's, um, time that she's splitting between Mayor's Court and Finance is more 50/50 than 60/40 like it was, so that's a reallocation also, but not a change. Um, there's no increase. If you look at the two in total, there's really not an increase, a significant increase between them. Um, we have budgeted for about a 3% increase for, um, for staff, but that's based on, um, the mayor and the police chief's individual evaluations of people, but 3% is what we budgeted that we figure where we'll probably land for most people. Um, for lands and buildings, for maintenance, we did budget for a second maintenance person with around 25 to 30 hours a week, which is similar to what Brian's doing now. Um, and then there's also budgeted for a seasonal person from about April 1st to, uh, September 30th. So what you're looking at really is two part-time people and one seasonal people, one seasonal person, excuse me. Um, and then also in the Slams and Buildings, um, there is a pretty big increase down here in, um, supplies and materials to build out some of the equipment we have for that maintenance department. Um, and there's also a increase in contractual services, um, as a contingency for some mowing should come to that. We're hopeful that it won't, but if it needs to, it's there. So lands and buildings is a pretty significant increase over prior years, and those are the reasons why.
It makes sense now that we have more layers of buildings.
Right. Uh, this capital outlay, this is the remainder of the pool, um, that's not going to be appropriated in 2020. Um, the project actually is going to happen in 2021. Um, this is the appropriation for it here. Um, in other funds, just quick. The, um, street maintenance, this 127,000 here that we're setting aside for capital outlay is the anticipation of the Maplewood Cleveland Avenue Inter Section Project, um, that 127,000 is based on an estimate that's probably now about 18 to 24 months old, so that could be low. Even if it is a little low though, we do have the funds available to pay cash for that. We do not need to do any kind of debt issue to do that project. We have the money to do this. Storm sewer maintenance, um, this 10,000 and 27,000 is, um, beginning CCTV in areas of the village and getting on that maintenance program. And this capital outlay here is primarily going to be, uh, the Shore Court projects. Don't know if that's an accurate number, but it's something to, to get started with. Um, but the important thing is that we are starting the CCTV and starting maintenance of that. On about a, uh, Mike's recommendation is to do about one-sixth of the village each year and put it on a six-year cycle. Um, the waterline fund, this is what we, um, budget for. Contract with the City of Columbus gives us one water main break. Um, if there's any additional water main breaks, that's on us. So that's, um, in case that happens, um, it's also for maintenance of fire hydrants if any need repaired. Um, we typically don't spend this amount of money, but we, again, appropriate it so that it's there if we need it. And then the sewer maintenance fund, this is also putting us back on that six-year cycle for CCTV. Um, it's been about, it's probably been almost six years now. Once we're into 21, that area's had its, um, it's for CCTV. Um, I know we've done quite a bit of work without the sewer, through the sewers, and I think now all of them have been addressed and hit. Um, so this is now, instead of the repair cycle, this is putting us on the maintenance cycle of keeping up with all the work that's now been done. Um, and the debt service is starting to pay for the OPWAC loans that we've had, um, to do these two most recent projects. Um, these waterline debt service funds, these are the OPWAC funds from the early 2000s. 2021 and 2022 are the last two years of those, so these are really close to being paid off. Um, so that's good news, but these are not, there's no change in these from anything you've seen before. Um, capital outlay funds, this is where we're gonna, um, that we went ahead and appropriated some money. Um, the facilities fund, the 62,000, that's the current balance in that fund. We're going to just go ahead and appropriate all of it now instead of, um, having to work that through council again. Um, and then the parkland fund, this, uh, the Finance Committee recommended going ahead and fitting this amount to start to look at buying, um, benches and trashcans and all the things that have been talked about for those areas. Obviously, those things are not going to be $100,000, but, um, if the council so desires, if planning and zoning, um, have input and they come up with something, they do want this, again, prevents us from having to come back to council for a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, it's already there. Um, but I'm sure that council will still be involved in those decisions. The Tiff Fund is, yes.
Uh, just real quick on the Parkland Improvement Fund, this is the, the money collected from the MI area?
Yes.
And is this, is this all of it?
Yes.
This is the fund, so this is all we have left to, um, work with. Okay, great.
The Tiff Funds, um, right now, this is just an estimate. Um, we usually know more once we get the first half settlement in February or March, what that actually plays out and looks like, but this will definitely cover the first half. Um, I expect that's going to be higher next year than it was this year, um, which is good because obviously the more we're paying to MI, the faster we get access to that Tiff money. Uh, but we'll know more about that in the spring where we actually stand. So, um, total all funds that we've appropriated is 3.5 million, which is pretty significantly higher than what we've historically done, but two reasons for that being, one, historically, we've not appropriated at the beginning. We've kind of waited to go, um, for council to make some decisions before we've appropriated this year. We've kind of, um, we know these things are coming, so we've gone ahead and appropriated them in the first place. And second, um, we know there's a couple of large projects like the the, uh, section and the, uh, East Shore Court project that are already being appropriated here, um, and we've not had that historically, so that's new too. Typically, we end up around the H 82.9 range. Um, so like I said, this is higher, but it's project-based. We're spending money for improvements, so that's the reason for the increase. So there's the highlights, so I will answer any questions that you have.
Um, I just had a I, I just had a clarification. Now, the, uh, would the aqueduct, uh, contract be in the, um, community environment or the lands and buildings?
It's in community environment. Um, historically, that's been kind of a lakes thing, and actually I didn't take that out. It still says lakes. Um.
Do you think though?
But it's become more of a, everything that doesn't fit into parks, but still benefits the entire community. So yes, it's, the aqueduct is in this 102,000.
So maybe, uh, maybe though it, it should be in lands and buildings since that's where we're putting maintenance.
That would be fine. As it changes.
Questioning, I, um. Do we have?
Either place, it's not going to impact the overall budget, so either place that comes out of, both of them are reasonable.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking of, uh, making, just to, just in terms of having one place to look, of course it won't be, but more like one place to look for all the maintenance in the village that's going on, uh, in the exterior and the, and, um, it seems like the aqueduct is maintenance, it's not, uh, uh, one time without a park bench, you know, I mean, it's maintenance.
Sure.
That's my only thought on that.
It, I mean, I go, I know this is my, my first, you know, uh, budget forecast, but from what I'm seeing and hearing, it looks like and sounds like we're in pretty solid shape for everything we're anticipating.
We really are. Um, I know I said the Finance Meeting, but I'm, when again, because it bears repeating, um, that when I first started, um, there was a lot of, um, let's say, lack of access to funds. There wasn't the money to do a lot of the things that needed to be done. Um, and with some of that money that's coming from the MI my projects, that's really, really benefited the village, not only in providing the money to do those things, but it also is the burden on the general fund that had to pick up a lot of that and, and a lot of that storm sewer maintenance. When I started, all storm sewer maintenance was being paid from the general fund. We now have a funding source for that. Um, and we're working on creating an ongoing funding source for that, so that's that's a pretty big deal. So I, I'm really glad to see the village in a, in a place where we can make those repairs without having to stress over how we're currently going to pay those repairs. It's a, it's a much better place to be in.
Lack of access to funds, that is such a diplomatic way of saying broke. I like it.
Uh huh. Well, I, yeah, no, I feel it. I don't know. I'm sure, uh, there's, there's others that have been on council or, or observed council for a while, but I just, I feel like, um, I agree, Kim, that just, uh, it's just a whole feeling of a more solid foundation on which to, to do the business of the village. It's a, I mean, we, uh, come in at a time where we have an opportunity to actually have some fun, fun with uh, the money and, and, and actually, uh, do something rather than having to angst about, um, you know, we'll have to sacrifice this to do this, or we'll have to wait on that and that sort of thing, so it's, it's, it's nice.
Well, maybe it's time to say thanks to the, the residents in the new development. Sorry, the golf course is gone, but now we're not strapped for cash anymore.
And now, now we're more viable as a village. I was always a question. Yeah, it was always a question in my mind, being here, living here for 30 years, it's just that I just, uh, as, you know, as time goes on and we're surrounded by, by cities, it just, uh, we're, we're, we were so small, it just, it begged the question of, does it make sense for, for the village to continue as a village? I mean, it entered my mind a couple of times in the, over the years as to whether or not we would, you know, the village would actually continue as a village, uh, in the future. And so the MI, uh, adding on the, uh, MI development has allowed the village to to get past that point and to actually, um, be able to
Hope for the future.
Yeah, exactly, Tony, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I have this personal bias against golf courses from an environmental standpoint, but two birds and one stone, definitely is what it sounds like.
In your mind.
Well, yes.
All right. Um, and Kim, that, uh, you're, uh, you kind of, uh, we usually look at a village request, uh, village equipment replacement schedule. Um, and we, we didn't this time, but there is, uh, you mentioned that there's a replacement for the police car this year.
Yeah, let me get this pulled up. I'm not sure, uh, do you see an Excel spreadsheet now, or do you still see the appropriations?
Still see the old one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Close out a one, open other, yeah, you gotta.
Oops. Yes. Share again. Okay, do this one. Okay. And you see a spreadsheet now?
I see Zoom. Oh, there it is, all right.
Okay. Great. Um, this is a, um, equipment replacement schedule. Um, this is kind of developed by the departments. And what we try to then get into the budget. Some of these numbers in total should, um, roll up into the budget. So the 65,000, that's the, um, police amount. Um, includes a replacement cruiser. This includes everything it would cost to build it out. It does not, um, include the trade-in amount at this point. Um, because we're, we historically wait on, on that, we go ahead and appropriate the whole amount because we're not always sure if we're actually going to do the trade-in or if we're going to try to sell the car to another, um, agency. So, um, but you can see from 2020 to 2021, this is the difference in that lease payment that I was talking about. Um, the Police Department, um, is on cycle to replace its computers. Um, I think they were last replaced in 2016 or 2017. Um, so that's their cycle there. Um, MDTs, we were able to, um, upgrade two of them in 2020. Um, this is upgrading the third in 2021, and then the new one, um, the new vehicle have the updated one in it already. Uh, we replace, um, a couple of the body cameras every year just because they're on a cycle. They eventually wear out and go bad, so we replace a couple every year. Um, and then the modem for the cruisers was again something we did some of them in 2020 and we're doing the rest of them in 2021. So as you can see, um, that number did decrease a bit between 20 and 21.
I have a question about the police cruisers. Uh, you know, we still would approve, council would still approve the purchase of that. I mean, what I'm getting at is appropriating now doesn't approve the purchase of the police cruiser.
It essentially
Right, this just saves.
Yeah.
The council starts to approve the actual purchase of it though.
Past councils have decided to get on the replace a vehicle every year program, and we got four vehicles we replace every year. I'd like to talk about that when it comes time to do that.
I'd like, I'd be very much with Tony, it seems like with that, because one, replace a new vehicle a year, I think we're on the same page.
That was what a past, you know, past council decided that's how they wanted to proceed and, you know, I have a lot of, that's a
When I first started, we had the Yeah, when I started, we had the three cruisers and they were being replaced every three years. Um, and when we went to the fourth cruiser, taking some of the pressure off of the three cruisers, a lot is to also extend out the cycle to replacing every four years. Um, I'll let the police chief speak to that and it's necessary or necessity, but, um, I'm just giving you the background of where that four-year replacement cycle came from.
It's very appreciated.
Um, okay. Lands and Buildings, um, we've got the server in 2021. I know we're discussing right now, um, the possibility of that being upgraded this year. Um, because upgrade it instead of replace that we may be able to fund that using Cares money. Um, so that actually might change slightly. Um, with any luck, so. Uh, yeah, so overall, our equipment needs, um, have gone down slightly, but that's, um, that does fluctuate every year, it just does. Depending on what goes bad and what needs replaced. Most of our things we do have on a cycle, like the computers, like the server, um, the vehicles, so, um, especially this, a lot of computer equipment in one year that obviously will fluctuate higher, um, and might not be in other years, so it just, and we've tried, I think, to time it out, um, like the computers in the Police Department. I mean, they are cycled to be placed this year, but they're being replaced in a year where everything else was lower. So we've tried to get it to a point where it kind of stays flat. Doesn't always work out that way, but that was the goal.
So the, the lands and, uh, the lands and building, the, I mean, oh no, that's under that the supplies and equipment for the maintenance group, the, the additional amount we put in there, where is, is that on here or is that not because it's not a cap? Is this just?
It is under Yeah, it's not a capital expenditure because of the dollar amount of, we're talking a big big ultimate dollar expenditure, but when you look at the individual items, they're not large dollar expenditures or large, not all large dollar expenditures. In that, um, 400s category, that supplies category, there is a line item that is actually called, um, minor equipment. So, um, the, uh, landscaping equipment is in there. So it just doesn't show up on the spreadsheet.
Okay. Any other questions for Kim?
I'm good.
Well, if you think of anything, um, in the meantime, email me. I can make any changes. Um, we'll have, um, two readings this month and the third reading, um, the first meeting in December, so there will be another work session before this actually gets finalized and passed. So, um, at this point, we can still make any changes that council wishes to see.
And Kim, real quick, you have a, I'm, I'm sure you do. Um, just the bottom line number, like what are projected revenue versus what this budget spends number?
Yes. Good. We are currently projected to end the year this year. Uh, with now a little over $700,000. Um, doing these things in 2021 would take our fund balance to about 625, um, 625,000. So we are spending, next year, we are spending more than we're intending to bring in, but, um, that was intentional by design. And not a reason to panic. I don't want anybody to think that. The decreasing fund balance in this case is, we've accumulated the resources, we need to do some things, and we're going to do those things that we said we were going to do.
Yeah.
Hey, Kim, could you just briefly go over how you determine, do the sanity check on, on our expenditures versus our funds?
Yes, so the five-year, we project out five years, and we kind of went through this in the Finance Committee. Um, I don't necessarily bring it to council as much for the five years, but, um, eight, uh, $200,000 fund balance is my gut check. I don't like to go below that. That makes me ex exceedingly nervous. Um, the goal, the, um, Government Financers Officers Association goal, um, nationwide is that you have two two months expenses as your carryover of your running fund balance. Um, 200,000 for us is a little less than that. Um, but we don't go below that two months threshold until 2025 in that five-year forecast. So we're still in pretty good financial standing, um, through 2025.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it.
Like I said, if anybody has any questions, feel free to email me. And I will update based on your feedback.
Thank you so much, Kim.
Thanks.
All right. So, uh, we're back on the agenda. Um, and, uh, 8:31, perfect. Uh, so, on the agenda then, uh, we'll talk about the council meeting on Monday and specifically, um, the legislation The legislation.
I just want to let you know I'm out at nine thirty. That was, we didn't, I don't know if anybody else has anywhere to be, but I have to leave here at nine thirty.
I'm probably headed out around nine, but I have some very brief things for community that I can discuss in a minute or two.
Okay. All right, let's get through the legislation, because we'll probably be looking for feedback from mayor, and then we'll. Let those that. David and then the mayor go over to the, any administrative items. Get those, get those done, so legislation. Mark, did you want to take that, or do you want me to just go through it?
I brought. A medium packet for Monday, so I can walk us through it real quick. So first, we got the pool, the baby pool thing. It looks like this was changed to put the price at a hundred and sixty, which is the actual price. The one before, we had the price minus the grant money. And that appears to be the only change in it. Then we had the one that maybe needs to get talked about a little more today. This is the. Various reoccurring contracts necessary for the continuous operation, where we're gonna either vote to or not vote to accept. And, you know, it would be passed, this would be the third reading we have coming up. So if anyone wants to put a stop to this, they might want to put a stop to it before Monday night. This is, you know, the mosquito pain, the payroll, the paycor, all that stuff. Anyone have a stomach or issue to talk about, or a bone to pick anywhere?
Well, I brought this up, Pat, in, you know, the last meeting, just, just, not that I'm against doing it this way, it's just I'm curious as to what the agreements are going to be, some of them. That was my only reason for bringing it up. But I'm.
My under, here's what I'll tell you, it's my understanding, most of these are going to be within dollars or the same. For example, we don't have the mosquito spraying one. You know, it, I guess I look at it this way. If we pass this, when we get the mosquito spraying information, if I feel like council's not gonna want to do it this year, I'm not gonna sign it until I bring it back to you guys. I know that that's still putting you guys in like, is she really going to, or is she not? Because obviously I don't have to. But I think most of you guys know me well enough to know that I'm not going to do anything that council's gonna be mad about. That said, there could be something that comes up that maybe you guys aren't thrilled that I did, so I do get it. Mosquito spraying is not out, I did email her, and I'm just using this as an example. And she said, other than if we decide to set additional traps or anything like that, basically, the price is going to be the same, very similar, because it's just spread amongst everybody else. Now, again, that's one of those ones that, you know, I, trust me, I have my two cents about it. I had a lot of people complain because we weren't spraying. Just because there wasn't West Nile virus, you know, there's still mosquitoes, and they're irritating. There's a couple of people on council that don't agree with that, but anybody can go back and look at Facebook, that there were people that were mad that we only sprayed once. I'm gonna say with, I'm mad that we spent seven, or what, five thousand or whatever, and we only sprayed once. So I'm just gonna be honest, I'm not thrilled with that one either. So, you know, I don't have an issue if you guys want to pick and choose and take off certain ones, if there's certain things that you guys want to revisit. That said. Just bear with us if we need something passed as an emergency or something along those lines, because these things are going to come up. And, you know, I know some people don't necessarily want to get them passed, but when you're trying to deal with contracts for, you know, I would say the biggest ones for me, I couldn't imagine having to bring every single task order to you guys for Mike Flickinger. We will never get anything done. I get different things from him constantly between the schools, adjusting different things. I wouldn't have the ability to be able to do any of that without bringing them to you guys. So I don't think you guys have. I know I never had, being on council, any idea how much of this stuff continually, and it's not. It's not big money things, but it's still stuff that it's a contract. I would have to bring every single one of those to you, and I probably have seventeen different task orders. There are seventeen, you guys can pull them. I'm not sure how many are active, but with Mike, it's constant. I mean, it's something that, again, between every different sanitary storm sewer, East Shore Court project, Westerville City Schools, the MI inspections and all that kind of stuff, I have different things. I probably signed two to three things with Mike at least every single month, just so you know. And I would need to bring every single one of those to you guys. So there is a rhyme or reason as to why some of these are on there now. I'm not in disagreement, if there's something you hate, take it off there. KGT, you know, I don't do a ton with them, but I do. I mean, we get updates quite regularly, if there's something that breaks or something that does this. As long as the money is budgeted, and Diane made a very valid point about that. You know, I can't go and just sign a contract with somebody that's ten thousand dollars more. And the reason is, is it's not budgeted. So for example, if. I said this. If the attorney bill goes up to seventy-five thousand dollars, I can't sign it, it's not budgeted, it's not appropriated. I don't have, I would still have to come back to you in order to do that. So my point to you guys is, is if there's certain ones that are on there that you absolutely are not happy with, take them off. The reason that we added PayCor was, again, it was, it's a contract, you guys already did it. If it fluctuates within the dollar amount that's budgeted, then yes, I would be able to sign it. But again, if it goes up significantly, no, I wouldn't. AquaDoc is in there. Again, we only have X amount of dollars budgeted, we're gonna have to determine which additional lakes we want. That may still have to come back to you guys. So there are things that would make, I don't want to say not, just because it makes my life easier, doesn't make it right. But there are certain things that you guys aren't going to care about that we do. And administratively, you guys are going to be slowing things down drastically. But again, if there's ones that you really want to go through, take them off. And, and again, I did, we could only go back to two thousand and fifteen, and you can go back and find this typical document. For whatever reason, I couldn't find it one of the years, I don't know which year that was, but I was able to find it all the way back to two thousand and fifteen. This is something that they have done. I don't know why, I don't know who started it, I don't know if this is normal, I can only tell you it's been normal for us.
Yep, and I don't really hear too many people saying they want to pull out or change any of these, so. I think we can move on to the next one, which is one I personally am. The new one, and adopting rules of council for the Village of Minerva Park for twenty twenty-one. I scrolled down, I couldn't see that exhibit A that it's referring to, what's the change with that?
You don't have an exhibit A yet?
I sent, I sent it in.
Yes.
I sent it in an email, it's the calendar for next year. That's what that's talking about.
Correct, so we'll get Becky to update that. She's, I asked Diane to do it yesterday, and Diane did it yesterday, she got it to us in no time. It's also for you guys to look at today. Before we add it in, every, we haven't changed any of the actual, the only thing that changed was the calendar, which is the very last page, I believe Diane, correct me if I'm wrong. And it's just something we do every year, but we've not changed any of the actual rules, we've just changed the calendar. But she sent that, if anybody doesn't like the dates, if there's a holiday in there that we, we don't want. I didn't notice any, Diane, I thought it looked perfect. But she will get that sent.
And we can, we can take it, if you want to discuss it more, we can discuss it after, you know, the mayor's had to leave. So, but you've looked at it.
I did. I liked, I liked the one December meeting, I think that was perfect, and I didn't notice that we were on any. I mean, at their Monday night, so I mean, we might have hit like, but I, I, I thought it was fine.
Okay. And as far as this year, we did have, this year, we have two December meetings, and the second December meeting that's on the books in, in the rules of council. Is the Monday of Christmas week, and the mayor was asking if we could eliminate that one. And I didn't know. If anybody had any opinion on that.
I just thought December twenty-first was way close to the holidays. For everybody, depending on, you know, whatever you celebrate. And I did not catch that, because our first meeting is the fourteenth, the second one's the twenty-first. I personally don't have any plans, but I didn't necessarily want to spend it with council. I'm just kidding.
I think what we could do is just agree to eliminate the twenty-first meeting, and then if, if something die, something dire happens, and we need that second, a second meeting for a reading or whatever. You know, we could bump up a week and get it, get it done, just announce it as a special meeting.
Does anybody, does anybody else care?
I mean, that's, that's fun. That's fine, I, I'm more than happy to hang out with you guys on the evening of the twenty-first, but I understand that not everybody is.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm gonna be going anywhere on a Monday night either. Next one is, of course, accepting the reserve. I know we were waiting on making sure that the punch list and everything was done, is that finished, or are we still going to be pushing this?
We are still doing things. So I was just out in the field the other day, marking things up. Definitely table it, and December, I think, will at least have an updated list, and everyone can make a determination at that time, but am I still working with me to get things done that I'm finding out there?
So we can just skip over that.
We have, I, I'm not sure if we ever technically tabled it. Did we actually, see, if we didn't table, we have to, we have to have the reading and table it, Mark.
We'll read it and table it then.
Okay.
Okay. What's our next one? To do seventeen twenty twenty-one appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the village. Is that just the, no, this is a first reading. Oh, this is next year's budget, right?
And that's the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, this is. This is next year's budget, and it's our first reading, so we still have time to. Tweak and, and play with that.
Okay. I think that's, that's it, right? Is there anything else that's going to be up for discussion on Monday that we need to talk about right now?
Not that I can think of, unless everyone's finally happy with sidewalks, and we can finish that off. And. And up.
Tony, we, we, there was a. An update sent out on sidewalks. If you want to take a look at it.
I don't think I got that.
Before Monday.
I'll get everything sent out to everybody again, no big deal, I think it was just legislation, looked at it.
Oh, I see.
I'll send it up.
All right.
Okay, and there will be, and I don't know if it's gonna make it to Monday night, but if it doesn't make it to Monday night, next Monday, and I think, I do think we're trying to get it for Monday. What is the date today? Oh, my goodness. Okay, so the CARES Act Fund, all of the money must be appropriated or sent back by the twentieth of November. So our plan or goal is to appropriate the rest of the money, which is going to be an appropriation. And then that gives us another month and a half to spend it. So at this point, expect another appropriations for the CARES Act money. And the first reading should be Monday, but if not, we're gonna read it on the sixteenth and just pass it. Well, we don't have to pass it as an emergency, but waive the readings. But that's what it is for, is to appropriate the CARES Act money.
How much of it are you appropriating?
What's that?
How much of? All of?
Oh, yeah, if, if we don't appropriate it, we lose it. So.
And then we're gonna, we're gonna try to figure out how we're gonna spend it.
Yeah, we're still trying to figure that out, but, so we would be appropriating it in, in capital out, more than likely, you know, in both. The two main things, like any type of contract, or. A couple of different ways, you know, if we were trying to get no-touch trash cans, that's one thing. I mean, we have no, we're working on the server because upgrading the server technology has been one of the big things that they've allowed people to do. And the last one, we appropriated a couple additional laptops that connected to the server. So we're trying to see if we can get that upgraded, since it wasn't budgeted for last year. We're hoping that we can actually get our server covered in this as well. So, because it is something that we actually, we really do need. With the additional equipment and things like that, so. And apparently, you know, this isn't going anywhere, so this is still stuff that, not to be crazy, anybody could end up with it at any time. So, you know, that's just because we haven't had anybody out with it yet, doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. So, um, that's that, so you could see one more piece of legislation before Monday.
How, how long do we have to decide what we're gonna spend the money on?
December.
Okay, that.
It has to be, yes, it has to be spent by December tw- thirtieth, December, yeah. But it has to be appropriated by next, unless they extend it, and they have not yet. I mean, November twentieth is the extension, or is the appropriation date.
Yeah, Congress is out of, Congress is out of session, and I believe. Until the hundred and seventeenth Congress is sworn in in January, unless I'm mistaken. So I wouldn't count on an extension.
It's crazy. So, so expect another piece of legislation, just whether, and we're gonna have to either A, make, create another meeting, or. Waive the readings, so, but I'm sure everybody's gonna be on board with. Spending money that's, spending money appropriately that's not ours.
You know, I, I was just thinking that. People have been talking about, you know, there's various. There's a help yourself. If you need it. Booth or whatever that's in the neighborhood somewhere. I don't think, I don't know if it's in Minerva Park specifically, but it's, it's a private thing that's being done. But in terms of helping the actual, helping the community. It's just a thought I just had, it's not a big deal, but if you had one, if, if the actual Minerva Park sponsored one as a village. For donating or actually building a little. Shelter or a box to put food donate, or donate food and supply donations. Maybe have it by the pool. Something like that, that would help out needy families in the area.
Yeah, what you're talking about Diane is Nikki and Anup Shresh, I believe, I'm probably not saying their last name right. They live on Ultra Vista, and they have what they call a blessing box, and that's, it's sort of like one of those little mini libraries, but like four times the size, and it just get, people just stock canned goods or dry, you know. The sort of the standard stuff you'd see in a food drive just gets put in there, and if someone wants to walk by and grab something, someone walks by and grabs something.
Or they can go by and throw it all over the street.
Well.
Big enough village to deal with our nation's failing on mental health issues.
Well, and the, the, the good news about, the good news or bad news about that is. We know who it is, so we'll see if we can. Figure that out. And moving, oh, sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, it sounds to me like we need to have, you know, start planning on talking about how we're gonna spend it. I know the mayor said something to me about maybe, you know, doing some remodeling, and, you know, to try to get some, some social distance between the workers in the, in the building. I think, I don't know what the process is, but I think it's, if we gotta spend the money by the end of the year, we better start moving. If we're gonna do.
And just so you know on that, where we are, and Jesse, I think you're, yeah, Jesse's on here. One of the places that we're at right now is trying to get inventory of all of the things that need to be sold out of the EMS. We have quite a few things that actually do have some dollar values, not just the EMS truck. And Jesse, I'm gonna start asking some questions here. Is it accurate that anything over a thousand dollars? We have to have councils. It has to go through council if it's over a thousand, or what do we need to do if it's over, or what is the dollar amount?
You have, if we're going to sell something for over a thousand. I would, yes, I would have it come through council. Just to make sure there's no questions.
Yes, we, we have to put everything up for private sale in, in an auction format over that value, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's what I thought, okay, because I, we went through this with the golf cart, because it was well under a thousand dollars, that it was just fine for me to do it. Now, this is my other question for you, and Diane, we won't stay on this long, because this, we can't do anything with the EMS area until I get some of this stuff out of there. We have a lot of like. Alcohol wipes and gauze, and, you know, these things that are dollars, literally dollars. We have looked into, we are not able to send it back, because it's. But there's not gonna be anybody interested in giving us ten dollars for this, twelve dollars. I mean, we do have a couple of people that have requested donations, and also requested like, getting that stuff in bulk and paying, you know, a hundred or five hundred or whatever for like, all of it. Which is still well under the thousand, is that something that we can do? Or should we still refrain from, at what point? Are we teetering on, even on the little stuff, like, again, it's a bunch of little Band-Aids and that kind of stuff?
Sure, I mean, maybe the smartest way to go would be to bring a resolution to council, granting you the authority to distribute all EMS materials under X amount of dollars. And then just give us in, in. Uh, and then just give us and and direct you to give a, give a report back to where, where things went and where the money went, and that would probably satisfy any issues.
And just so, and just so council is aware, we actually have, um, four individual people that have reached out wanting some of the equipment. Um, we have somebody that's giving us some pricing on some of the equipment, the used equipment. Um, that's an outsider. Um, I don't wanna say it's our own people giving us these estimates of what the equipment should be worth. Um, so if we did do a resolution to do that, would you still keep the dollar amount as a thousand? Or would council be okay doing it to getting rid of some of the smaller equipment, or do you want everything over a thousand to go through you guys? If we did a resolution?
I think if you, I think the first thing to do is if you didn't, if you did the inventory so we could see what you're talking about instead of having to go like to say blindly say, yeah. Uh, so could we have, could, could we get the inventory done?
I, I guess that's my question. Do you want all of the alcohol wipes inventoried and all of that kind of stuff? I think that's.
You know, just, I, I don't think we need you to say, this is me, uh, I don't think we need to say, I'll count every alcohol wipe and say, you know, a thousand alcohol wipes, just say alcohol wipes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is ridiculous. I mean.
I, I'm more interested in the physical, the physical equipment, the, the
Okay.
The one-off, the uniques, that the, um, heart monitors, the, uh, you know, those, those things that, um, that, you know, either, even if they're under a thousand dollars, they may be something that knows that this is something that is desperately needed in a community, you know, like so, uh, or some organization that they would very much like to see it donated to, for example. I mean, there might be some, yes, some, some items that, uh, you know, uh, have more meaning or more substantial than others. Uh, so if we just had an inventory of those.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Dislanious Band-Aids, uh, ten by, you know, like bazillion, uh, but, but I, but I count of the actual number of, uh, of, of pieces of substantial.
Uh, I have a lot of that stuff coming through already. Um, so I will get some of that stuff, get it sent over to you guys. Um, again, I could start reading some of these emails and you guys would, yeah, I'm assuming um, David might be about the only one that's gonna have any idea what some of these things even are. So, I mean, of course, there's a heart monitor. I think we all know what that is, but I, I have no idea what these other things are.
Send me a copy if you don't mind.
Oh, no, it's like seventy different emails from different. Piled onto one. So, yes, as soon as we do, um, I will get it sent over. Like, there's just emails going back and forth between what's this, what's that and all that, so.
Work ED, I'm, I'm relatively familiar with EMS, um, but like, when, when it comes down to, you know, tracking boxes of Band-Aids and alcohol wipes, I use thirty, I use thirty alcohol wipes tonight. I mean, they're valueless. They're, they're not even worth, they're not worth pennies.
Right. And I think that's part of it.
A lot of the little stuff like that, it might even just be easier to, there's there, there, as Dave says, they're valueless if you have them, and if you don't, they're pretty important. And I know there's lots of organizations out there that'll take, you know, even, they'll take gloves, they'll take whatever, cause they need.
Masks. We need N ninety-five masks, hospitals will need them.
Friend who started a charity that they were going to hospitals, cause like the IV packs would all have like three needles for the different sizes. And their big thing was like, don't throw out the ones you don't use, we'll take them. And, you know, use them in Salvador or wherever where they don't, they don't have that.
We have a couple, um, and I'm, I don't wanna say this wrong, but I'm probably gonna say it wrong. We have one person that is actually, um, an instructor that has, most of the people that have reached out have at some point in time worked with the Village of Minerva Park. Um, and so these are the people now that have reached out and said, you know, we've donated X over the years and now we're looking for donations back and da-da-da-da-da. So there's things like that going on. Um, and again, most of those are the smaller type things. But the bigger type things, people are offering obviously money for. Um, so we'll see how all that pans out. Yeah, I mean, I'll get you guys a, um, list as soon as I have the list. I've asked Rick, Rick's gonna start putting it together. And I think he's got somebody else helping him put it together. So as soon as I get that, I will let you know. And then before we get rid of like the piles of just again, alcohol wipes, we'll get a resolution to you guys that, um, also states X amount can go with your eyes' permission, as long as you guys approve it, so.
I would just say garage sale rules, you know?
Exactly.
If, if you wanna buy the scooter that I'm trying to sell today, that's actually gonna have a price and this and that. If you wanna take this inspirational quote that got painted onto a piece of wood, I'm not gonna put you on the price, you can take it out of my yard and I'm done.
I do have one thing that I'm gonna have you guys, and I don't necessarily want or need an answer right this second, but I'd like for you guys to think about this. Um, there is, I, I'm understanding that there is a museum of some sort, um, and I'm calling it a museum, I don't know exactly what it is, but they are interested in some of the memorabilia. Um, the firefighter hats or, you know, some of the things that are in there. Obviously, we have some things that are pretty old in there, um, as well as some things that same in River Park. And it has been requested that we donate those things to this place.
I, I'm not in favor of that at all.
And I, I, I knew that, Tony, so that's why, you know, it was one of those things that it was brought to my attention again yesterday. Um, and obviously they're wanting me to sign something that states that they can come get some of that stuff. Um, and again, I want you guys to kind of think about that because I'm not going to do it without your guys' permission. So, I don't want it just to solely be mine. I mean, I'm
I would say.
There's many of you have been in the village much longer than I have. And I think a lot of residents, maybe over time, that would be something that would be great for us to have, so. Um, but I also don't wanna neglect somebody from being able to have it in some sort of museum. So, I think there's a fair balance between what we would allow out of here and what we wouldn't. Um, for something that maybe we really wanna keep for, you know, the residents that have been here for fifty, sixty, seventy years, so.
If you, if you go to City Hall in Columbus or to go to the plea, you know, there's all kinds of little displays of stuff that they've had in the past, and I don't wanna see another thing leave the building.
Right, so.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd look nice in our new or renovated building, you know, some of our, some of our history. I'm not, I'm not opposed to giving them, you know, a helmet or a patch if we've got spares, but the majority belongs with the people.
Right, so that's why I brought it up because it seemed like a no-brainer that we would go, I'm just gonna tell you. It seemed like a no-brainer that we would go ahead and do this, and it's been mentioned to me twice now. And I'm like, you know, and at, at first, you know, because this is what Tiffany does, oh, that sounds like a great idea. And then I start thinking about it and I'm like, eh, is it? Um, so it's one of those things that I did wanna mention it to you guys, let you guys think about it. We can talk about it later. Um, because I know we have much more, not that this is not extremely important, because we don't wanna, I will not be getting rid of any of that stuff until it's discussed with you guys.
Well, I, I appreciate you, uh, saying that, and, uh, I am, I am not a historian by nature, but I know my sister is, is, and she would just be, uh, devastated to hear something like that was going to happen. So, we have, you know, it, it's, it's your point of view, but I think I certainly was having, in, in, in my vision of the facility, wherever, however it ends up, it has a display case with some history in it, so it definitely has it, so.
Again, I, I, I think you guys all know that, you know, it's one of those things that it sounded, you know, oh, yeah, that's great, we're gonna go, you know, people are, we're gonna be displayed somewhere and then you start thinking about it and you realize that there's a lot of residents that I think would be very disappointed had we gotten rid of some of that stuff. And, and again, I think there's a fair share. Um, you know, hopefully we can be displayed somewhere, but also.
I would love it if we could find, you know, everybody talks about how the EMS started out with housewives.
Yeah.
And I would just love it if someone had a picture of that. I.
There is some pictures, I know, uh, Bob, Bob Stewart, I think is the, you know, resident historian. I've seen pictures of the squaw, squaw squad. Parade, I think it came from.
Well, that's not very nice, but okay.
That's, I know, it's not politically correct, but that was what they were called.
Alright. Well, yeah, I think that would be great to, to put together. I think that's an important part of the history of Minerva Park if you're um, and, uh, so, anyway. Um, people who care about that and wanna preserve some of the history, I think are, are important people. Um, that we need, we need to respect that aspect of, of that. So, okay. Uh, are we moving on then, uh, to the rest?
Yeah, I'm sending an email to, uh, Rick right now, I'm sorry.
You, I would say, you know, if they're real persistent, I would start with, you know, old stuff that is branded Minerva Park doesn't go, if it's just old stuff. You know, here, here's an old, you know, whatever bar.
There's a lot of hose or, uh, no, hose nozzles.
Right.
Stuff like that, that doesn't say, that doesn't have the village name or logo on it, it, to me is just an old fire hose and it can go to a fire museum. Uh, the stuff we wanna put in our council, stuff that says Minerva Park on it. And, and, you know, has a little more direct ties to the village, I guess, is what I'm saying. If that makes.
I mean, yeah.
People might disagree with that, but that's, that's my sort of theory on it.
Yeah, but the, the majority, I mean, the stuff that belongs to our people. I mean, let, I mean, you know, we can give them some patches or some old, you know, whatever. If we have some spares, but I mean, first and foremost, the best examples should be on display in the trust of our, in the trust of our people.
Yeah. Alright, what's next?
So, uh, we have, uh, on the, uh, list, we can, we can talk about Garmin Miller. It was passed on, uh, nine twenty-eight, so, uh, it's been, uh, just over thirty days. And so we wanna get the status on that. I hear Eric is on the call now. Between Eric and, um, Mayor, do you have a status on that?
Yes. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm in, I'm in route to take my son to his job, so I apologize if my connection heads off here, so. Um, a couple of quick things. We got Garmin Miller in very quickly for an initial staff introduction, uh, just this past week. Um, myself, the mayor, the chief, and Leah, we're all present. Uh, that's just a little kickoff meeting. Obviously, this is, um, remember, this is a two-parter agreement with phasing, so they can get to a, a price and budget and concepts to present to council. Their next step is they're coming back to the building next week. They're going to, uh, more thoroughly assess the existing structure and surrounding grounds. Uh, and then probably start talking to staff a little bit at the same time from a programming standpoint, although those have not been formally scheduled. Once they get to a place where they have obviously options and pricing, and there will be some options, uh, they will come back and we will present all of that to council. And at that point, uh, you'll be able to make a decision on how they're proceeding and which obviously option is best, you know, obviously based on several factors there, including cost. And at that point, once you approve, um, one of those and move into kind of full construction documents, you'll be heading towards your new building.
So, can, can we have a, uh, in this first phase of where, where they're? Uh, so you're saying that since they've come on site and they've got an entry to the staff, does that mean that we have a contract signed at this point?
We do. Mayor signed one, uh, that is again, for that first phase, for that twelve thousand dollars as they proposed. And you authorized the mayor to sign that, and so, yes, they are proceeding forward with, uh, the initial assessment. This is a preliminary conceptual part to get them to giving you hard options and dollar amounts that go with that, at which point you'll actually have something in front of you, because right now they're just putting all of that together.
Um, and everyone, real quick, this is totally off-topic, so pardon the interruption. Uh, I just wanted to point out that Councilperson Wolf did just recently text me that he was having internet things, so it looks like they got worse rather than better. That's probably why he's not on here right now.
Okay.
Had the same issues at our house all week, so I get it.
Huh. Well, I'm glad I don't, I don't know, uh. Um, so, is, I, I'm sorry, can you repeat, did you, you said that there's a contract, it'll be nice to see it. Can, can we, can council have a copy of the contract?
Yes, I will send over the mayor's signed contract. Uh, it's very brief and Jesse reviewed that before it was signed.
And so, and, and you mentioned a, a, a price on there, what was it?
Okay, that was the twelve thousand dollars, I think, if I remember, and that was for the, uh, this is the preliminary phase one to get them to a point of being able to produce for you a full bore number for doing all of your construction builds, which of course are dependent upon what.
Okay, so this is, okay, I, 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 I get it now. Alright, so, this is their, uh, okay. So, um, and is there, I, I'd like to, I'd like us to stay on some kind of, uh, or make some kind of commitment to moving forward on a schedule. So, for this, for each phase, uh, uh, I'd like us to see us have a a, uh, schedule, uh, calendar, uh, where, or, or uh, we plan to finish this by, our goal is to finish this by the end of November, middle of December. You know, I'd like to see a date associated with this.
I will share the kind of preliminary, uh, schedule that they, when I send over the contract, I'll share their very short and sweet preliminary, uh, view of how that'll proceed.
Okay.
Yes, and, and just, and, and I think when we had our kickoff meeting, Diane, it was very simple, basic, and it was strictly, this is the process. This is, we're doing this by this date, this by this date, this by this date. That was our initial kickoff. We have not done, the only thing that was discussed in that entire meeting was we no longer have EMS. There was no, we want this, we want this, we want this. It was strictly, this is the process, these are the dates, this is what we would like to see happen. Um, we're gonna set, you know, meetings for, meeting with, um, actually, again, he's coming out first so they can rewalk the building. Um, now that there's no EMS, that changes a lot of things clearly. Um, and that was a little bit of a surprise to them, so not a complete surprise, but a surprise. Um, so, you know, I think that changes things a lot, it, for what a lot of people are gonna, you know, possibly, what they're, you know, what they thought before and what they're thinking now. So, that was, the kickoff meeting was strictly talking about, again, dates, what they do, how they do it, um, that type of thing. So, there's, that's, that's as far as we have gotten. And like he said, we are meeting with them next week. Well, he's coming in next week to go through the building and then we'll see where we are from there. But yes, the information he gave us is a packet. Um, with dates and when we hope to have this, this and this.
Okay. Look forward to, uh, to reading, reading up on that. Um, and so, uh, then if we're ready to move forward, there was the, um, Lake Shore Tree removal status, I, is it just, is it, one's completed and the other one couldn't be, is there still? Are we done with for the year or are we still trying to?
I think we still have one more day. Eric, I'm not sure if you're on here and if you know for sure, uh, I'm not.
Um, so, I, I, I can touch base with him. I know that he was trying after he was, uh, sick. He got back out there and I know that I saw them. And I know he texted me, he was out there yesterday, but it was before I got on site, um, so I'll just touch base and see where he's at.
Perfect. Yeah, I know he was out there the full day, the one day, but I hadn't seen him and I didn't know if I missed him, so. Um, because the last day was the day that was supposed to be focused on the North Lake, so. Um, yeah, if you can just verify that part, Eric, that he's, he's spent his last day at the North Lake or when that's gonna occur, that would be awesome.
Yes, I will.
Okay, then moving on then, uh, that is the, uh, back stairs, uh, for the police.
What was that?
Backstairs for the police.
They are, they should be starting on for roughly sometime next week. I don't wanna say a day.
Okay, um, and the, we talked about the care spending, uh, and the newsletter, the trial is over, so are we good to go that we're we're now together and there's no more trial and we're gonna continue as a?
Um, I'm gonna use my words, not theirs. Um, they're, you know, they have a new president, they have a new, you know, they're, they're rearranging all of their stuff. At this point in time, I think they're happy, I think we're happy, I think that there's no issues. Um, you know, but with new leadership, they may decide to go a different direction. I don't believe they're planning to, but I won't speak for them. I've not heard that there's any issues that we are gonna continue.
Okay. Um, and so, what happens is the cost is, is cost split, uh, because I know that they were just doing quarterly or every other month, and we do every month, and
Right.
Is, is the cost just being split fifty-fifty at this point, or how's that?
Correct, so it's being split fifty-fifty and basically this has enabled them to, you know, it, the thing it did for us is obviously lower our price, it makes it much prettier. Um, because we've got some color, we've got some, you know, we've got a couple different, it doesn't just look blah. Um, so, you know, we have a much better product at a much le- much lower cost. Um, so, that's what it did for us, but for them, it enabled them to not have to do it quarterly and they were able to do it monthly. Um, with, even with COVID, you know, I think they really still wanna be able to communicate with the residents and all of that kind of stuff, especially. Um, with, even with COVID, you know, I think they really still want to be able to communicate with the residents and all of that kind of stuff, especially, you know, with everything going on. Moving forward, I'm, I'm sure next year, you know, they're, they're in hopes of coming out with a lot of. Getting residents back together, we don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but being able to get a monthly newsletter out versus quarterly. Was something that they also, in my understanding, wanted to do, and not just quarterly. So it, it's still a win-win for both, um, at this point in time, yes, it's split down the middle. Um, yes, I, you know, I'm thrilled with it, um, Becky still does all of our stuff, and then we, we ship it over to them, and then we tweak it from there.
Okay, speaking of, um, speaking of working with MPCA and with. Um, our newsletter, I, I've got a, I work again this evening, could I just, uh. Put in a real quick plug before I head out? Again, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt our schedule too terribly much, but. In the age of COVID and with increased cooperation and coordination with the MPCA. I've been thinking up a couple different ideas, um, about how to. Increase community events and community communication and things like that when. You know, during the age of COVID and when the weather is gonna be bad. I've, this Veterans Day one has already been a bit of a success, and I'm hoping that once the, um. Once the newsletter comes out, that there'll be more. But I was thinking for Thanksgiving, I could put out, you know, a solicitation for, you know, uh. Share your, you know, Thanksgiving recipes if you want to, or, you know, not like family secrets, but you know, ones you want to share. With the community, or, um. I don't know, I've, I've just got a, a handful of ideas for other holidays throughout the year, that we could, you know, put out and. More or less, you know, digital forums, I guess, until, until things are safe to get together in public again, that's something I'd really like to start doing. If there's not objection from my fellow council people.
Well, I think it sounds like what you're doing is more MPCA oriented.
I wouldn't say MPCA oriented as much as coordinating with them. Which is what I see, or part of what I see our role. To be. Include, to include, our role is included, I guess.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I, you know, um. In, in what way, how would, um, the MP, in terms of the communication and all that, how would you, where do you see the councils? Or the, the administration's role? In this, uh, in, in the Thanksgiving?
Well. I mean, we could put something out on our website too, to, you know, solicit like, uh. You know, these, you know, recipes, or, you know, you know, warm memories or. Stories, or you know, something, it's just a, just an idea I've been beating around, um, that. Cause you know, I, I have, you know, all this, or a fair amount of stuff being emailed to me about Veterans Day that I'm getting ready to. Put together to be posted throughout the day, so a little, you know, just show up throughout Veterans Day, I'm thinking that, you know. Seeing as this is becoming a bit of a success, we could do it with other holidays as well, um. And I'm more than happy to, you know, spearhead all of it, um.
It, it, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, sounds like, yeah, uh, I was just thinking, you know, cause the, you know, when we were. When I was looking at the, uh, different people's website, it, it seems like the. It seems like the, um, villages or the municipalities website is more. More, uh, business professional, and, and that, the, the warm and fuzzy stuff. Which is great, I, I, I don't mean that in, in a negative way, the warm and fuzzy stuff. Uh, is more on like a Facebook platform, and.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's how I figured it'd be shared.
Yeah, so, you know, the village has their own Facebook page, and I, you know, was thinking that as far as. You know, we talked about posting pictures of your village tax money at work or whatever. And then, maybe all of that needs to be on the, the village's Facebook page versus the village's.
We can, we can, you know, we can discuss that further, but you know, does anybody have any. You know, huge issues with that kind of stuff going forward, so that. I mean, because if, you know, if nobody wants me to participate with doing that kind of thing, I won't write up the, I won't brainstorm and write up the.
I don't really think you need to ask our permission to do that kind of stuff, I mean, you can. You know, as Councilman McNamara, you can, if you want to put articles in. I mean, I, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but as long as it's just you, you know, what you're promoting.
Well, you know, I, I, you know, I, I'd like the community. I'd like input from the Community Committee as well, because I figured that that could be a nice little, a nice little bonus to our community, you know, uh. You know, little stories or recipes, or, you know, seasonally themed stuff in our newsletter, um. And as soon as we're missing, um, we're missing our third Councilman Curl, I'm very, I'm very happy to hear that you're. Supportive of that kind of stuff, um, Tony, thank you.
Well, and I think you're getting into, you know, maybe it's time for you to have a Community Committee meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's, um, that's something I was thinking about as well, because I'd love to, I'd love to, um. How about I get in touch with you guys, I'll send you an email of some, of some potential dates, once I'm off my work weeks, does that sound good?
There you go.
It sounds good.
All right, guys, in that case, I look forward to that, I think, I think there's a whole lot of untapped potential in this, this kind of, uh. In this kind of stuff, but. I work this evening, so I am gonna go take quite a long nap.
Okay, all right, thanks, David.
Yep, see you guys.
All right, uh, moving on then, we have, uh, yeah, we talked about the MI Home sign off already. It was gonna go on, it's gonna be tabled for now, and, uh, if Tiffany, is Tiffany still here, oh, yeah. Uh, just the last thing on, on the list that I had, I don't know if anybody else has anything else, was, is the HVAC install? Tiffany?
Yeah, just how's that HVAC coming?
Coming great, sorry, so I'm young new, um, they were out there, they thought it was gonna take three days, it took more like four or five. Um, it's my understanding that it is complete, I will tell you, um. I'm just gonna say it, that yesterday it was getting a little warm in there, so we were trying to figure out, you know, is it user error, or is there an error, so. Um, if there is, obviously, we're gonna call them right back out, but yesterday, with the sun beaming on the back of the building, it was getting a little warm in there. And it didn't seem like it was, um, doing exactly what we wanted it to, so.
I have an update as I, I proceed to give them a call and stuff, uh, after you had left. So it turned out, what, what I found is that the unit, the air conditioning unit on the back end was, uh, you know, the, the actual outside. Unit was not coming on, that would be a problem, so no cold air was being transferred, uh. No, no heat exchange, so I went out there and, and they've got it situated, you know, normally on your house, you would have a. On-off switch, and I just figured that was the standard stuff, since we were getting winter, they had shut that little, little power switch off, but that was, uh. Because of it, it's a commercial grade system, um, it's a little different, and it wasn't, uh, to what I expected, I didn't want to stick my fingers in it, so I called them, uh. Called them out, um, and they said they were gonna be able to stop in after, after hour, so I, I let the, them know that if there was no officers there. They call the, you know, the dispatch, I left my number, you know, they've had any issues, but. Um, I didn't get a call, so I figured they must have shown up and seen an officer and got to fixing whatever they needed to fix.
Perfect, so we'll get an update on that, um, just to make sure that, you know, we're not starting off on a bad foot, so. Um, we're assuming it had probably something to do with, you know, a switch off, because it was freezing when they were here all last week, and I don't know if anybody anticipated it being almost eighty degrees yesterday. So who knows, but either way, we need to know what it is, um, but it is complete. Um, we already got the bill and we already wrote the checkout, so, um, that's that, so we'll keep you up to date on that.
And that, of course, came out of CARES money, right?
At this point in time, as long as they don't throw it back in our face, yes.
The caveat, but that's very nice.
Yes, so either way, um, it, it's, yeah, we'll, we'll get that right along, so.
Okay, uh, is there anything else, Tiffany, I know you're, it's nine twenty-one.
Um, I, this, this may go a little bit along even with what David was saying, but one of the things, um, when we were. There we go, hang on, Brian, um, we are as a village, um. The officers are gonna be doing something similar with like shop with a cop, except it's gonna look different this year, as you can obviously imagine. Um, we are getting ready to also do a kickoff of, um. Residents being able to nominate somebody or themselves or whatever for the holidays as well, uh, so we're gonna have a link on the website, we're gonna have a link on. Uh, we'll be sharing it via Facebook and all that kind of stuff, if you know somebody in the neighborhood or surrounding areas that are in need for the holidays. And then we're gonna put together something to where people can donate to that, the village is not gonna be contributing unless you want to individually. So we're gonna be doing some different things like that for the holiday season, um, so you guys will see some of that, Becky and I are kind of coordinating some of it. There was a lot of stuff left over, um, from last year apparently that was never donated, um, so we already have a good start on some younger kids, um. Quite a few things that was left over from Legos to blankets to, you know, you name it. So, um, we just thought this would be a great year to do it, we want to do it, so it's something that, it's not really gonna take away from what we're currently doing, but. I'm just kind of letting you guys know that that's something that, you know, I, I'm always wanting to do. Um, I also had a resident reach out, uh, for the worms thing, I told you guys that, so that's something that, um, hopefully, you know, if individually. I'm not saying as a village or council or anything like that, that we're gonna do anything, um, but individually, if people would like to do that, you know, once we get the information, I'll pass it along.
I did want to mention on the worm thing that, uh, I don't know, uh, people were aware about the community garden has. Uh, donated, uh, vegetables, uh, throughout the season, so. Yeah, plenty, quite a few, um, for worm.
Right, and I, it's a great organization, and, and I, the only, you know, the only thing I want to say is if, you know, other people have different ideas in the village that, you know. Want to do different things, and, you know, they want to get people to, um, contribute, or, you know, whatever, you know. More power to them, I mean, I'm not focused on one particular, you know, it's something individually, again, I'm, I'm, I don't want to do it. I don't want to take off a hat or put off on a hat, but that's something that, you know, I, I. This is gonna be a year, I think, that a lot of people are gonna need some extra assistance, um, whether it be canned food, or whether it be. Um, gifts and things like that for, you know. I, I think this is gonna be a year that, you know, people are gonna need assistance even more so than they have in the past. So, we'll see, so, that's something that you guys are just gonna see, just kind of throwing it out there, um, because we will be posting it. Um, and then we'll also be posting the requests for what ages that we're looking for and that kind of stuff, so. If anybody knows anybody or, um, anything like that, you guys can start, get ready to start sending it in. Other than that, no, I mean, everything is moving right along, um, I already talked to him about the EMS. Um, I do have the visions of getting some of that stuff done with the CARES Act money, Tony's fully aware of it, uh, being able to. You know, when Eric comes in, and Eric's, I think, on here, when Eric comes in, he basically sits in the same room as, um. He doesn't have anywhere to go, our code enforcement officer doesn't have anywhere to go, um, we, everybody just kind of sits in the same little room, and. It's, it's distracting when you have somebody coming in to ask a question about permitting. Um, you know, everybody's talking in the same room, when people come in for lunch, that's where they go for lunch, when people, so. Trying to separate and give, you know, figure out exactly what it, what we want to do, um, has not been determined who we're gonna put in there, um, the other thought was to move. Chief into that room, um, that way Leah could have her office, because you would have that separate entrance to where the officers could go back and forth. Um, we, we've thought about it in twelve different directions, I'm not gonna waste your guys' meeting on that, so once we. Once we figure out, you know, once we get everything out of there, or mostly out of there, we will start doing some stuff, we were able to get most of the furniture out. Um, we put that at the street last week, and I, um, plan on getting the rest of the furniture out this week. So a lot of that stuff will be gone, it's just the equipment that's still in there.
Only thing I will toss on that, just as an extra thing for you to think and worry about, is. If we do plan on storing one or more lawnmower in there, you know, maybe. Tape off a, a twelve by ten foot section towards the front door and say, hey, this, someone's gonna have an office and look at a big. Lawnmower, and well, there you go, that's what they're gonna do.
The garage, I mean, my vision right now is the only thing that would be done to the garage, if we did anything to the garage, is put the garage back where the garage was. And Tony knows what I'm talking about when I say that. Um, I'm sure that eventually there's gonna be major renovations in there, um, that's, you know, we'll leave that up to the contractor, we're not looking to spend, you know. A bunch of money to do stuff and then turn around and redo it again, um, but to where we could actually get it functioning, I mean, I, I'm gonna say this. Um, actually, I'm not gonna say this, because I, it, it, it's.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so, um. Yeah, yeah, anyway, yeah, it sounds like, yeah, it would, because the garage is not heated, so. The garage is not, is not part of the HVAC system, so.
There's no block, I mean, it may not be heated, but heat's getting into there, because there's, it's open.
Uh, no, they have something in there, um, that shoots out hot air like there's no tomorrow, just so you guys know. I have no idea what it is, it's some kind of heater system, that when it was kicking the other day, it was so hot in that garage. I don't know, uh, again, I didn't even realize there was something in there, I have no idea what it is, it's like, Brian knows.
Well, so, so maybe our electric bill go down, right?
Um, and actually, I will tell you guys this, um, I have been on the phone, obviously, with insurance and, you know, twelve different thousand people. I couldn't even tell you who I'll have talked to, but, um, our insurance will actually not drop until we get rid of the EMS. So even though, um, the EMS truck, so they will not do a midterm, it doesn't expire until July of next year. So, um, just because we've gotten rid of all of our EMS, it's not gonna affect our actual bill, which is like twenty-six thousand dollars. But, once we get rid of the EMS and the additional equipment, they will actually do. Um, they will only do a revision if you get rid of an automobile, which is kind of weird, but it is what it is, so as soon as we get rid of that, they will do a revision. And we will see a decrease, um, so we do want to get that as soon as possible, I mean, we do want to get rid of the EMS as soon as possible. Um, that's the only thing that we don't have any leads on yet, um, we've been kind of getting the word out. Um, but we don't have any leads on getting rid of that, obviously, we're probably gonna put it on gov deals or whatever it is. Um, as soon as I have the features of it, we will get it advertised, I could, I mean. The only way I could advertise it right now is ambulance for sale, um, I have no idea what motor it is, what year it is, what, I'm trying to get all that information. So as soon as I get that information from Rick, it will go on the website immediately. Um, so, I don't know, I mean, a, as far, we're working on several different things, but the insurance will not drop yet, but it will drop eventually. Um, I did ask them a whole bunch of random things that you guys, it, it's kind of interesting on, um. Who's allowed to drive what and all that kind of stuff, we can get into that stuff later, I thought it was, it was interesting the way our insurance works, so. Um, I had a nice long conversation with her, we also, I did apply for a thousand dollar grant to do the handrails for the concrete stairs. Um, they're probably gonna be a little bit more than a thousand, but it does sound like we're gonna get that thousand dollars grant for, um, the handrails. I don't know if I told everybody that, or just some of you guys that, so just FYI, um. I'll let you know as soon as I get the final answer on that.
And is there any, uh, it's nine thirty, is there any other thing on streets that you want to update us about?
Mike's on vacation this week, so Tony, you can take it over after this, Mike's on vacation this week, I do hope that as soon as Mike gets back, we have some updates to where we can actually have. A Streets Committee meeting, he will not be back until I believe it was the twelfth. Um, so, yes, as soon as he gets back, I will follow up and see if he's ready to meet, um, because I would really like to. Get the East Shore Court moving forward and, um, just finding out where we are, as you guys saw, there was some road closures at Wildwood. Um, Woodley, Elmhurst, all that area, uh, several times, so they are still working, as you've seen. Um, Tony and I have had a couple questions in regards to, um. Other people's sewer issues, I've sent Tony over, Tony actually went over and looked at some, so we're. We have a couple different problem areas that, you know, are probably not our issue, but, um. How residents might think it's our issue, um, so anyways, we have a couple of those going on right now, and then the. There's something else I was gonna tell you about that.
Is it the, the map that just came up?
No, it was before.
I'm just prepping it for next.
There you go.
And then, Tony, I'll get with you on another one, um, but I'm working. And then Tony, I'll get with you on another one, but I'm working with Mike, looking to draw on another one. I know what it was. Leaf pickup. If anybody's watching this, I'm. Sometimes you guys know I'm a little animated, but I'm just going to say this. He doesn't come through the village every single day. I, I don't know. We don't expect our trash people to come to pick up our trash as soon as we put it out at the street. So slow down, bear with them. The amount of complaints that I have gotten in the last two weeks or Becky has gotten in the last two weeks because he has not been there this week. He wasn't there when, and I'm just going to agree with this. When I see that the weather's going to be 70 degrees and sunny and it's 30 degrees and raining and snowing. I'm probably not going to go out either. So I know I have seen him numerous times over the last couple of days that it's been really nice, but I know he wasn't out that much last week and I, I don't blame him. He is here. He's getting it done. We've, I personally have not had issues over on our side. But he can't come to everybody's house every single day. So bear with them, slow down. It's one truck. It's one crew. Every time the truck gets full, he has to leave the village, go dump the truck and then come back. There is not a set date that he's going to be here. I guess I could ramble for another 30 minutes, but I will tell you. I can't count the amount of calls that we've had on both hands because we have had that many people call because he has not been to their house. Since he put, they put the leaves out. So just. He will get there. And that's my plug on, but if you have a complaint, feel free to call. I mean, it's, he's getting there as fast as he can.
Okay. So we're back. I think we're. Then the next.
Okay, hang on.
The next thing to do is to continue to, to review the committee, the committee reports, Tiffany. So. Did you, you mentioned you wanted to possibly talk about, and I don't know what time you have.
Oh yeah, I got.
What's up here? What's up here now that Eric put up?
I'm going to let Eric and Tony talk about this. I was going to tell you that. As far as Diane, and this goes for Diane and Mark. Can somebody find that legislative thing that Jen Pocken did a long time ago and make sure that that thing has been up to date or is getting up to date on? When we, when we actually pass legislation, when we need to start readings, when we need to do all of that. I know that there's a form. I know that there's something that would drastically help myself and keep us all on pace. And I know I sent it out a while ago. For some reason I could, I wasn't able to pull it up. So that was that, what that email was. It was the thing that had like the levies on it, when, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So.
I do remember that. That was.
We should have that. We have a levy every single year and it would be nice if we were. I'm going to say, I, I think maybe it's my responsibility to know when a levy is coming up, but I'm not sure that it's solely my responsibility to know when legislation is supposed to start for a levy, but. We all just kind of need to make sure that we're doing it.
Yeah, I think that really is the administration and fiscal, fiscal officer in particular.
Right. So, but I also know that Jen Pocken's created this form for a reason. So it would be nice if we could just update the form periodically or get me the form and I would be more than happy to update it.
I'll see if I, I know I saw it once, but that was back in what, 2017 or?
I don't know. I don't know. I, I, I know it's something that exists. And then moving on to this, I actually have a question. Hey, Brian, I don't know if you're on here. So if I click off, this is just going to make somebody else, it won't shut you guys off from live streaming, correct?
Yeah, when you leave, right, it'll, it'll give you the option, leave. And, and meeting for all, or just leave meeting and you want to just leave, it's also going to give you, you know, who, who do you want to make host and you'll need to assign somebody else host. I've been having really bad internet connection this morning, so don't do me.
Okay, I'll do Diane. So if you guys have any questions for me, email me and I'll see you guys Monday night.
Okay.
All right.
Except I'm still trying to figure it out. Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, here we go.
Right. So I'll just kind of roll into this then. So this is work product to this point that P and Z has put together. Had some very nice productive meetings, I think. Last couple of times. Basically, this is a map of proposed green space activities. And Brian, I don't know if you can see this. I am getting a little feedback. So maybe there's a speaker, it's a speaker to receiver issue. There's somewhere on someone's end. Brian, I don't know if you can see this. I did email this out before the meeting, so feel, feel free to bring it up to follow it along if you're not seeing the screen. Essentially what we've got here are P and Z, as they discussed, wanted feedback to see what, if council had any. Preference, and it can be some, all, none of these five areas as denoted here on the map. That P and Z will then proceed based on council's feedback to go and get you more options and harder numbers for you to consider. Which of these projects are the most viable? Because obviously right now these are conceptual and they will all have different cost maintenance and. Planning requirements to them. Some more involved than others, obviously, some more costly, you know, number five. Improvements in a new playground, probably going to be, you know, have a dollar amount, but it may be council's preference that we improve that area first and foremost. So. Things like the Lily Pond are going to be more just plantings and maybe some additional ground type improvements, things that are already anticipated such as, you know, benches and things like that. And, you know, an area like number one, then perhaps we'll have a little more if there's a shelter included, but it's a decent amount of mowing and maybe some grading for prep area. So that's kind of an example. It's, no decision is needed, obviously, right now. I will send out a few extra directions to the, you know, council members who couldn't make it or, or see it. David had to get off and obviously Joe wasn't here, but. We can do feedback from email before the next meeting, which is on the 16th, 18th. For P and Z and they can then proceed forward to prioritize them and go from there. But happy to answer any questions and Tony, I don't know if you've got anything to say as well.
Wow, I would just like everybody to take a look at this and, you know, see if they have any other, you know, things that they'd like to add into this. You know. You know, the, the next step in this process is where the. I, I envision, you know, seeing that we have a hundred plus thousand dollars in the Parkland Fund is having council. You know, maybe prioritize what areas they would like to work on first. I will say that. Lisa has put in a grant application for the Lily Pond area. So we may be getting funding for that. It won't need to come out of the general fund. But, you know, I just like everyone, like I said, to take a look at this and see if there's anything they'd like to add in. The one thing that isn't show up on this map is we had talked about. You know, some, part of the overall green space plan would be, you know, adding a connection from the Jordan Road area is on the, on the plan. And pickleball and amp or not amp. Pavilion or something over by the pool are the other things that I think we talked about that don't appear on this. This map. And if anyone has any other suggestions, love to hear them.
When you say the by the pool, do you mean with inside the fenced area of the pool or?
The, the, the area that's not fenced in beside the pool.
Yeah. And Tony, thanks for that. I, this is a smaller cut in of this. I'll. Get the map out a little bit and make sure that those other items are on the larger scale map. So I'm making sure I get that updated and sent around.
Um, I, I like a lot of what I'm seeing on this.
I know the one thing that doesn't appear.
Whatever number five improvements in play. Oh, go ahead.
That, oh, number five. I think that was a pavilion.
The word I wanted to hear, to be honest. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. The amphitheater I know was a dream of many people and, but there's. I'm going to have a lot of questions when it comes to.
I would say the amphitheater.
Just to clarify, yeah, that's, that's a smaller job. Let's, I'll, I'll clarify that as well. It, it's just meant to stabilize it and get it, keep it from further degrading because as we've noted in our. Walk through, there's a lot of tree growth and it's, it's going to be completely unsavable if we don't do a few items on it. So it's just a phase one.
Definitely okay with saving it.
That's another area that, that Brady's working on a, a grant application, I had thought for. For the amphitheater area too.
We, we had that capital improvements budget that we were part of that they, they grant out to different municipalities and we did get in on that. However, COVID has goofed all the timing up, but. We should see some response here soon is what he has reported back and that we're aware of.
And one other thing that there's a little, you know, it doesn't appear on here, but Nathan Johnson has started, I think over, and maybe it is number five. Well, over by. Over by the basketball court, there's some fruit trees and not, I think a hazelnut tree or something. So there's a. A, a, a small orchard, we're calling it, that's being developed over basically where the circle number five is at. It's another thing that you could add on there.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll put a little notation there.
Yeah, it's actually closer to right where the bend is, right where the turn is just below number five on there.
Yeah. We'll verify the exact one.
I would definitely want, and I don't know if this is the right map or right place for it. But I think, you know, like I see other trails here. I would say probably my top first priority for any sort of improvement project. And I'm moving my cursor like you guys can see it because I'm dumb, is that little bit of walking trail in front of the parking lot there at the. The community center that desperately needs to be replaced.
Yes, we're actually working on a quote now as we speak for next season because obviously no asphalt now, but. I have something in place that we can, you know, utilize and plan for.
Yeah, I had mentioned that in the, yeah, Mark, in the finance meeting is, is, is that we should, yeah, do that. So I'm glad that. Administration is following up on that.
Yeah. I mean, other than that, I want to, I want myself a little shelter house picnic table pavilion at number five. If we also put one over at number one for the new residents, that's, that's nice too, I guess. Number five is where the basketball courts are, where you have that. On the other side, you have, you have a lot of open field there.
Yeah, the whole lot is there.
I'll get a proper note over in number five and we'll, we'll, we'll clear up a few items. I'll resend this and with some instructions to missing council members and then. You know, again, feedback anytime, doesn't have to be right away, but sometime in the next week would be great before the next P and Z.
Yeah, because P and Z is ready to go. It's ready to start planning. Alrighty.
Appreciate it.
Well, the only thing about the amphitheater that I, I'm kind of puzzled about is how, how can you have an amphitheater that's? Part of the, the dam.
Well, that, you know, that's something that.
It doesn't.
Bring opinions about what we can.
Not the dam so much. It's at the bottom. I definitely.
It's the spill, but that's a whole area where we're not supposed to, you know, with any, we need just.
If I may, so. Obviously, if we, if this is something, it definitely needs to be stabilized. Okay. And that's a phase one and it's, it's outside of the. What, what you're talking about is growth zone and disturbance zone. So, but the amphitheater itself, the actual structure is outside of that zone.
Yeah, but people have to, people aren't going to sit in that little bitty spot.
But, but that, but Diane, there's, that's a later planning stage. And, and you know, obviously there's several things that have to happen. The hillside. Actually, the bowl kind of around it to the, to the west there works nicely and, and we don't have to change much. People can just sit on the hillside and watch anything that goes on there. And there's places to put other types of seating arrangements without disturbing the dam. So we, we definitively wouldn't get into any of that. What we would do need to do down there are two major things. One. We've got to get rid of trees that are growing up and destroying, you know, what's left of the amphitheater footprint. And they are growing out through and it's, it's kind of wild down there. And that's number one. And number two, then the existing pylons, if nothing else, the posts need to be. Preserved and, you know, revitalized and we're getting a quote for that. And that actually shouldn't be too much. So we'll bring that back. That's, that's definitely phase one. And then what we would do is kind of depending on how much money we got. You know, because that, that is on the table for other work. We could then come back to council and bring you some options, you know, and this is, this is a little more down the road thing in 2021. But you can definitely plan out, you know, a lot nicer site down there.
Okay. So, and, and is this, you know, sometimes Eric, when you show us stuff, I'm, I'm thinking I'm going to be able to look at it later. And of course I'm not because. And, you know, you, you show it on your screen, but we, we don't get a copy of it. So are we going to get a copy of this?
And as I announced, just maybe you didn't hear it over the speaker there. I have sent this all around this morning prior to the. Meeting starting so that you do have a current copy of this. And obviously I will get this updated per comments today. And we'll send out a new email with some additional notes.
We just did this on Wednesday. So. Eric, thanks for getting, putting this together quickly.
You're welcome.
And Diane, I think the problem is because it took me a moment to find it. He just did it as a reply all on the Saturday work session agenda email. So it doesn't have its own, it's, if you're just looking at your thread on the left, it doesn't have its own heading that pops up. You have to go to the. Saturday work session agenda conversation, if that makes sense, because I had some finding it too.
Yep. Thank you. I got that. So I found it and, alright. Okay, so, alright, but are we moving on? So. Are there, in terms of it's nine forty seven, I don't think the communications chair is not here. So I guess we can move on from there. Community, we had the discussion, David. Did and. So we did the finance. Is there anything then for safety is?
Hi, yeah. So there is, just in a second here. And so safety, we spent the majority of the last meeting discussing potential rules for the. Basketball court. I wanted to socialize what we had discussed in that here before we meet again as a committee. This month to complete those and present them as a final recommendation to, to village to, you know, create signs. So the 10, the 11 rules. And I had intended to share my screen, but I, I, my stuff isn't working for that right now. Are as follows. Use basketball court at your own risk. Full court games may only be played if no other players are waiting. Limit playtime to some amount of minutes that has not yet been determined if other people are waiting to play. Do not hang on rim. Proper footwear required. No lowering of the hoops, no glass or alcoholic beverages. Place trash in trash cans. No fighting, no weapons, no littering. Does anybody have any issues with those rules?
No, I just that, you know. You've got probably, if you wanted to shorten it to 10 rules, you've got. Two things on littering.
Oh, are there two no litterings?
Oh, yeah.
Place trash in trash cans. Oh, yeah. Alright, yeah. Get rid of the. The no littering and then that's 10. Look at you. So the, the two that have been admitted that were discussed, I'll throw one out there in the suggested list of potential rules from residents. No public urination was suggested, but we, through our discussion opted to leave that out. If anybody else feels strongly, now's your chance to, to feel strongly about that. And then there was some discussion about no loud music. But since a noise ordinance, a general noise ordinance is on the legislative committee's agenda. We thought it best handled through a general noise ordinance then to put it here. Any other strong thoughts on that? Alright, then, then that's pretty much everything I got for safety committee meeting. A safety committee, I'll formalize this. We will have another meeting this month. And then bring forth a, a recommendation. Next month so that we can have signs made.
I was about to say, let's, when can we schedule that? But we're going to have to do that on Monday when we have the chief, I imagine.
Exactly.
Great. On legislation, is there anything? Uh, great, uh, on legislation, is there anything, uh, Mark?
Um, other than, unless we get some objections, I'm ready to uh, read and pass the sidewalk code tomorrow. Um, the noise legislation update, I don't really have an update on that, the only one that I've looked at was that, the one we saw first. Um, and I don't believe any actual decision was made on that, so we have another, another legislative meeting coming up in a week or two, when is it, the sixteenth? So that's probably what we'll be focusing on on the sixteenth, is the noise ordinance.
Okay, yeah, we were going to, um, Eric, had you mentioned, um, somebody said that they would try to get us a couple more to look at? Was that?
Yeah, because I think we just have Westervilles, maybe.
Yeah. Maybe Eric's not on anymore.
Yeah, he might be, and they dropped it off.
Okay. Um, yeah, all right, um, let's see, then we did administration, and uh, is there anything else on P and Z, Tony?
P and Z, no, it was strictly uh, green space discussion.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, real quick, Tony, since you mentioned P and Z, how are they feeling about our legislation that's going through? That's, you know, sort of amending their thing to formally say the admin can handle permits as long as they're within code and all that, does, does anyone on that think that they need to be involved in every permit, or?
You know, we haven't really discussed the details of that in the committee, I don't think, Eric, be there.
Yeah, I'm here, sir. Uh, so when we talk about committee, I apologize, I had to go handle something, run back to the screen, and I caught the end of this. So when we say committee, which committee do you want that discussed in, or you think that should be discussed in legislative?
Well, I mean, we already, we.
Yeah, you saw it, and it was a recommended by Jesse.
We've had.
I, I don't know, I don't know if Tony saw it, I mean, did, did you see the section G that they were going to put in the?
We have not brought it beyond legislative, we have not distributed out and put it on the formal agenda at this time, so. It would be, it, yeah, so you, it shouldn't have been a reading yet, because we didn't, we didn't make any legislation, because it hasn't been distributed to everyone else yet either, so that's the next step.
Okay, so I perhaps was just because I saw, was getting ahead of myself, I thought.
Yeah, if you could send out the sidewalk, the, the current sidewalk, and uh, whatever it is you're talking about there.
Yeah, the sidewalk, the, so Tony, just so since we're on this call talking about this, so what we did is I got MI to get me their actual specs to make sure it matched up with, because EMHNT prepared those, and they just used Columbus's specs, and so they got me the exact exhibits to how they are constructed. Um, and Westerville uses these same specs, and as far as I read it, it is, everything matches up with what we've got in the code as of right now, along with those changes to, you know, recommendations of just.
Well, I keep going back to that foot outside of the.
You know, and, and you'll see, I think, once you'll see it, read through it and look at the exhibit they sent over, uh, and I think everything matches up at this stage, so I'll send it around.
And Tony, that thing that I was talking about, um, is, as I understand it, just a clarification uh, rewording of that point in our code that says, you know, for some permits, like I actually want to put a fence in, if it's not something that requires a variance, administrative can handle it.
Right.
And, and, and clearly stating that out, so there's no, no confusion on it.
Absolutely, and that was, Jesse had read through that as well, and he can, he's, looks like he's off the line, but he can speak to it obviously Monday. He reviewed the code that we had done back in twenty seventeen, reviewed the notes, this is firm and prepared, obviously, because Gene was here during that time. Uh, and agreed that what changes that were made were exactly what we wanted to do. But this is a matter of making sure, as, as Marcus said, that this is unequivocally black and white, and that nobody would have any questions, and it'll be stuck right in the code. So the code already allows for what we're putting in there, but we're making it very clear at this stage.
Yeah, and so that was the last of my legislative things to squawk about.
Um, yeah, and I had the, I had a comment on that, but we don't need to comment it in, on it in this meeting, I guess, but that the insertion of the letter G and the um, the note about the, that the administrational, administratively can be handled, so. And when it says administratively handled, I'm assuming it's talking about village employees such as like the code enforcement officer and the, and the mayor?
That is correct. It, it goes back, when we say administration, the, the legal definition, uh, again, I would have Jesse can, you give it to if you'd like. Goes back to the executive authority within the village, which starts with the mayor, and then she designates her agents below, such as the employees.
Right, okay. Okay, um, yeah, I thought, it's just to me, uh, it was just a, it, that paragraph that G is clear, but the uh, technically twelve oh two oh four is the duties of the planning and zoning commission, and we've inserted something that talks about the duties of uh, the admin, administration. And I, I, I don't know that I have an answer for that, I just, I don't know if I would, if I were the uh, if I were the uh, mayor or the code enforcement officer looking for what I was supposed to do, I don't think I would look under P and Z. For my, for my duties.
This is where it's, it's, it's clear in how it's stated, and this is the attorney's recommended the language where it's, where it's located. If it wasn't supposed to be there, uh, he would have said it's not supposed to be there, so just clarify.
I, I'm just talking about, well, I, okay, all right. Anyway, uh, moving on, uh, so is there, we're at the end of our, is there anything else anybody wants to discuss? My gosh, it's nine fifty eight, oh my gosh!
Good meeting.
All right, then, do we have move, do we have a move, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, very good, thanks everybody, have a great day. Good weather.